Okay, great, thank you. Welcome everyone. This is a special meeting of the City Council on Tuesday, October 24, 2017. We are at the Veterans Memorial Hall. And for the record, all members are present. We do have a quorum and we'll call the meeting into order. This is Advisory Board Interviews. We have some vacancies and this is a Planning Commission Board Interview for one vacancy and we have three applicants.
Correct.
Okay, and I will open it for public comment for anybody who wants to speak at this time. Seeing none, we'll close public comment and bring it back to council. And I would, we have three applicants. I would invite the three applicants up to the table here and then grab a seat on front or back and then we'll say hello and do some introductions. Thanks for applying. This is for a seat on the Planning Commission. We'll go through questions, but we'll just start front to back as it is and it's Tony, Terry and Jesse. Okay, so actually Jesse Barron and Tony DeFazio and then Terry Simons. Okay, great. And Tony, if you could just briefly introduce yourself and then we'll go on to Terry and Jesse.
My name is Tony DeFazio.
Oh, I'm sorry, you'll have to push a button there and the green light is on and then pull that forward so we can, we can hear you and the audience, viewing audience can hear you. Thanks.
Yeah. My name is Tony DeFazio and I'm a local Morro Bay resident. I work in the architecture industry locally and I went to Cal Poly and graduated in 2010 with a Bachelor's of Architecture and have been fortunate enough to stay here and work in my profession.
Great, thanks very much. All right, Terry.
Hi, I'm Terry Simons. I'm a resident of Morro Bay. I've been in the county for 52 years. Went to Cal Poly for architecture a little while ago. I'm a licensed general engineering and building contractor, former licensed real estate salesman. I have a, have in the past had a planning business and have been a longtime fan of Morro Bay since I was about five years old. I caught my first fish in my life off the teapier in Morro Bay, so I keep coming back for more.
All right, great, Terry, thanks. And Jesse?
Hi, my name is Jesse Barone. I'm actually, my name is Jesus Barone.
Jesus?
So I confuse you with my resume for the record. So I'm, I've been a Morro Bay resident since 2014, so I moved here about three years ago. A big fan of the city. Got married here seven years ago, so just trying to work my way here since then. I graduated from Cal State Bakersfield with a degree in public administration. I'm working on a master's degree through Cal State Bakersfield right now. It's been going on forever, it seems like, but onward and upward. So I've worked for Slow County as a building inspector slash plans examiner. Been there since 2014. I was a building inspector slash plans examiner for current county for 10 years, so it seems like we're all in the industry here. That's it.
Okay, all right, thanks for those introductions. So we'll start from left to right on the council side and we'll just, each council member will ask a question and we'll just start in order and then we'll, Tony will ask you to go first and then maybe the next question. Terry, you can go first from Matt. So we'll look to Red to start out with his first question and then once he completes the question, we'll have Matt go and then we'll just wander right on through the questions. Red, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for coming, thank you for applying. So my first question is, tell me the difference between land use and zoning.
Land use and zoning. Zoning is specific to the development that's allowed in certain areas based on zoning areas and, and land use. I'm sorry. Land use is more specific to the use of the land within a certain area, whether you can have a restaurant or a retail space and so that's the main difference.
Terry?
Land use is fundamentally a function of the general plan and defines the types of uses that can occur in various areas of the city, whereas zoning sets up very specific standards of setback height and other kinds of quantifiable restrictions for individual projects and individual buildings.
It's hard to follow that.
Yeah.
That was a good answer. Zoning, when I think of zoning, I'm thinking of specific designations are residential versus, you know, commercial versus light industrial. When I think of land use, I think exactly how he said it, more of a broad, a broad spectrum. It's hard, it's hard to build off that, so. His answer is my answer.
All right. All right, Matt, and then we can start with Terry.
Okay, all right, gentlemen. Knowing that our general plan is going through revision and with that in mind, what do you see as the biggest issue facing our general plan and LCP plan update?
Okay, biggest issue with the pending land use plan and I think there's also some modification of the zoning ordinance coming down the pipe with that too. Like many communities, I think one of the unforeseen change, challenges that's going to come to Morro Bay has to do with ultimate buildout. State of California's recent efforts to improve the shortfall of housing in the state has prompted them to pass SB 1099, which basically is the granting unit ordinance, which mandates that all communities are going to have to accept additional residential units in any parcel that's legally zoned for residents. And I think that many communities, not unlike Morro Bay, are going to struggle with that because it's going to change the total buildout of communities in the way that they've been planned, not to mention just the staffing loads and coming in and having to adjust zoning ordinances and everything else to deal with it. So that's one of the big ones that I see coming. I could speak as to facilities, water and sewer, but I think I've spoken enough about that over the last several meetings. But the one that I haven't been hearing a lot about is the impending granting ordinance rules that are coming down the line.
Jesus?
Could you repeat the question to make sure I answer?
As we are currently in an update of our general plan and LCP, general plan has haven't been done for a number of decades. What do you see as the biggest issue or obstacle or consideration facing those two?
Well, housing, of course, in the Central Coast here, that's just, continues to be one of the biggest challenges in affordable housing specifically. I'm kind of wrapped up in completing my master's thesis on a, on how local governments, specifically central California governments, are dealing with the cannabis issue. So I may be a little biased in thinking that's a huge issue and maybe not towards the general plan, but just a general, huge issue in general facing the community in the upcoming, in the upcoming year. General plan specific, I think, housing and specifically the affordable housing situation and how to increase affordable housing.
Yeah, I would agree also with it. Being affordable housing is the biggest issue that we're facing, not just in our community, but in other cities within the county. And I think that probably the biggest challenge about the general plan is going to be its implementation once it's all decided upon and making sure that all the steps and all the major points of the general plan are carried out. I think it's, it's easier to establish plans on paper, but to implement them and to carry them out economically and within a time period that's realistic is going to be the biggest challenge.
Okay. Great. John, I'll go last.
Sure. Ben? Great. Welcome, gentlemen. Thanks for applying. Really appreciate you being involved in the community. So my question is this, and specifically putting on your Planning Commission hat, realizing that we're more or less a single focused economy and that is, we're driven by tourism, more specifically TOT tax, sales tax revenues and property tax revenues. From an economic standpoint, one of the things I think that would be important for the community would be facade improvement in the business districts. Realizing, and I know this is a long question, that a lot of the folks that have businesses here are lessees and they are not the owners of the building. Creatively, from a planning standpoint, what might you consider doing to improve facades generally in the community and more specifically with respect to any kind of ordinance that you might recommend from the planning standpoint?
Beautification, that's a great issue. I'm all over that. I agree wholeheartedly that this tourism-based industry that we, that we thrive in here is, could use some facade improvement. Ordinance-based would be difficult. Forcing business owners or property owners into, into legislating it would be difficult. I would encourage some sort of a best of Morro Bay type of, type of program of voting somehow or another, the citizens voting on which best, best Mexican restaurant, best burger joint, you know, and improving the facade through, through achievement, through encouragement rather than through legislation. I always, I'm a big proponent of awards and patting the pats on the back rather than a, you know, a carrot on a stick, so.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I would agree with Jesse regarding legislating, requiring property owners to update their building facades. It's kind of along the same lines as people who have vacation homes in the area and they're unoccupied for a majority of the time. How can we encourage property owners that have second homes to rent those as long-term rentals? Excuse me. Is there an incentive program that they can be a part of that can be implemented or is there, I don't think that mandating somebody through legislation to rent their house out as a long-term rental is a good idea, just like I don't think mandating existing property owners to update their facade is, is very realistic. So maybe there's an incentive program that's put into place. It's really hard to navigate the planning and building approval process as it is, regardless of whether or not you do it every day. So for people who don't do it all the time, it's kind of a daunting task for them and they're pretty deterred by the process in general. So if there's a way to make it a little more clear-cut and streamlined, which I think is part of the, part of what the point of the general plan and zoning, zoning update is for, is to make things a little bit easier so you're not going in circles looking for the information you need. Excuse me, so.
At the risk of going contrary to my normal political bent, I spent eight years in San Luis Obispo on the Architectural Review Commission, one year as chairman. And I will say that in terms of helping the downtown and helping business owners and property owners improve their properties through, as they go through the building application process, maybe Morro Bay is still too small for something as sophisticated as an Architectural Review Commission, but it's, it's different than the Planning Commission. When I served on the Architectural Review Commission, we actually looked at buildings, building facades, colors, coordination of signage and these kinds of things, whereas Planning Commission tends to look more at siting and land use. And I think that if it becomes popular in this community to do a downtown building enhancement, downtown improvement districts, it would be really important not to put the whole burden of reviewing plans and process on the Planning Commission. I think the Planning Commission should stick to areas of land use and variances, zoning types of things and let more detailed building review be done by another body like Architectural Review Commission or Community Design. That's what I would, in terms of, if I were to propose an ordinance, and I'm not saying that I would, but the ordinance that I have worked under in San Luis Obispo was the Architectural Review Commission ordinance, very effective. We, I was there in the early to late 80s and one of the biggest building periods of the, in the history of San Luis Obispo. We met weekly from four in the afternoon till midnight. We looked at an average of 30 to 50 projects a week, every week, for several years. So I don't see that happening in Morro Bay, but I see the possibility that you could take a more refined look at projects as they come along. I think that in order to enhance the basic tourist industry here in Morro Bay, you're going to have to accept some fairly significant tourist-based development and those will really need to be looked at closely from a visual impacts and from a planning perspective. And I think that's too much to put on the Planning Commission, but I'm happy to participate in that if I'm on the Planning Commission.
Thank you guys.
Okay, well, welcome everybody and we're delighted to see you apply and looking forward to hearing your answer to my question. I don't know if you're familiar with the code enforcement controversy in Morro Bay, but we are in a pause because we were at one time pretty complaint-driven and now, and then moved the opposite way in response to a grand jury report and that caused a furor. So I'd like your take on code enforcement, how you view it, and do you think it's possible to have a more neighborhood, some kind of an approach that allow differences by neighborhood depending on their needs and interests and culture? Go first.
Would you mind clarifying when you say, would you mind clarifying when you say difference in neighborhoods as far as who's subject to code enforcement and who's not?
Not whose, but how you might approach code enforcement. Is it possible actually to even do that? Have a different approach to code enforcement depending on the neighborhood? Or do, do you have to be consistent and if so, where do you come down on code enforcement?
I think, yeah, if you're, if you're pursuing code enforcement, you have to be consistent in general. I don't know how, if one neighborhood is violating the code or they haven't procured the proper building permits or approvals to pursue construction and another neighborhood maybe has, I don't think that that would be very fair. So I don't know how you could justify code enforcement in one neighborhood and maybe not another. I think that code enforcement is a big issue, not only here, but in other cities as well where the city of San Luis Obispo had their code enforcement initiative and that's kind of tapering off. And I think that to staff people to drive around the neighborhoods looking for work that's going on that's not permitted, is that within the city's budget to staff for that or should it remain code, or I'm sorry, complaint-driven? So I, it's kind of a tough one. I don't think that we could establish a code enforcement initiative based on neighborhoods. If they're all within the city, then I think everyone deserves fair treatment across the board.
Okay, thank you.
As I recall, the grand jury's mandate was that if you're going to have an ordinance, you better enforce it and if you're not going to enforce it, you better get rid of it. I think that the community has echoed that sentiment. I've rented a space to keep my extra vehicles and my trailers and stuff off the city streets. My boat's in the water, so I'm trying to be a good citizen from that perspective. I have worked with Tim Kristofek in your code enforcement department on some issues in our neighborhood. We had an illegal vacation rental and we've had people living in storage units, basic transient types, that have decided it's cheaper to rent a storage unit and safer, which I don't blame them. But, so I find that a lot of the issues of code enforcement have to do with the personalities that are doing the enforcing and I think Tim has done a great job in our experience. We're members of Neighborhood Watch and we've invoked our Neighborhood Watch status from time to time to try to get a few things done, both with planning and building and also with the police department. And I think that to answer your specific question, is it possible to go neighborhood by neighborhood? No, I think that you'll be right back in front of the grand jury. Can you make modifications to your zoning ordinance? Yes. Can you take your zoning ordinance and allow certain types of expanded activities, off-premises activities, off-private property? Probably not. I think that one of the impacted areas in this community is the streetscape with too many cars and too many recreational vehicles, boats, et cetera, on, within the public right-of-way. I don't see how you can not enforce general rules on that. What you can allow to occur on private property in terms of parking RVs, parking boats, vehicles, those sorts of things, I think that if you want to give people an opportunity to keep their boats close to home, keep their RVs close to home, then I think that you could, you could loosen up some of the restrictions in some of the zoned areas around the community. Just as a side note, I think one of the things that is most important is if you're going to work to tighten up regulations, you need to create a safety valve. If you're going to tell people they can't keep their RVs and their boats in their driveway, you better make sure that there are ample spaces, amply approved, properly zoned yards and storage places in a sufficient quantity to make that economically viable. I think a lot of people would be happy to park their extra cars or whatever in a secured private parking area if it were affordable, but I don't know if you've tried to find space to park vehicles. It's very expensive when you can find it at all. As I'm sure you're aware, I worked on a project to try to enhance the triangle lot for a boat storage facility and I'm still trying to work through the system to move that forward, but that would be a great place to create some interim storage if you were forced or you decided as a council to go back on the no boats, no trailers, no, no RVs on the streets. But I think that if you want to give people a break, let them do that on their private property.
Okay, thank you.
Been a while since I heard it. Can I hear the question one more time? I want to make sure I answer it correctly.
Well, you know, we, we have a controversy here about whether we should aggressively enforce all of the codes or, and we're currently in sort of a pause situation. Originally, it was mostly complaint-driven until the grand jury report said, enforce, you have it, enforce it. So the question is your position on code enforcement and whether or not you think it's possible to have any variations in that by neighborhood.
Right, that's, so CCNRs, covenants, conditions, covenants and restrictions, I might have had it backwards there. So homeowners associations, CCNRs, I think that's the mechanism for an increased code enforcement activity if that is indeed what the neighborhood is desiring. Retroactively establishing a HOA, I think is probably dubious, if not impossible, but if certain neighborhoods, you know, were able to establish an HOA, those are the types of mechanisms you could use to have tighter restrictions. For example, no parking in the driveways and things like that. I mean, I've, I've worked in neighborhoods, I've built in neighborhoods where you can't park in the driveways after 6:00 PM and those are ridiculous, sometimes over-the-top type of regulations, but, and I don't think that's what's, what's, what code enforcement is about. Code enforcement coming as a building inspector, code enforcement is a, you know, a mechanism to stop unpermitted construction primarily and keep the community safe. So I mean, from the life safety perspective, keeping people out of, you know, lawnmower sheds and garage, illegal garage conversions, that's an important task. I think we should aggressively enforce those codes for sure. You know, folks sleeping in RVs on the side of the road, yeah, that's, that's an important issue too. It brings down property values. It's, it's, it's just not a good look, quite frankly. So I think, yeah, I think we should be aggressively enforcing what we do have on the books or get rid of them, like the grand jury suggested. If we think it's okay to park your RV for 24 to 48 hours at a time, yeah, you know, that maybe we, as a community, we can decide that. That's why there's several layers of, you know, of government for, for us to talk about those things and, and iron these kinds of things out, so.
Okay, thank you.
It's my two cents.
Thanks. Who's, who's next on this?
I'm first up.
Oh, you're first up? Okay. So Terry, what's your goal as a Planning Commissioner and what do you want to accomplish?
That's the toughest question of the night. Of course, you would save that one for yourself. I'm hopefully moving for the last time in my life. I'm moving to Morro Bay because I love Morro Bay. I've always loved Morro Bay. I've had the opportunity to keep my boat here for many years, to do projects here over the years. It wasn't until I started actually working here that I realized how beautiful Morro Bay can be from a weather perspective. But having spent so many years in building and development, I also recognize that Morro Bay isn't everything that it could be, unfortunately, by quite, quite some way, and I speak in terms of aesthetics, visual aesthetics. There are also lots of issues that I see in the general area of the Planning Commission that are, that need resolution and that maybe need refocus in new directions in some of the things. I think in going through the zoning ordinance, for instance, I noticed that there's a preponderance of dependency on the Planning Commissioner, Planning Commission for conditional use permits for an extremely large variety of reasons. While that may be good from a revenue enhancement point of view at $5,000, Planning Commission conditional use permit purpose, a lot of what I've seen seem to be things that could be handled if there was an ability of a staff level approval, an administrative level approval with the ability to appeal to the Planning Commission. This is more typical of the planning and building regulation environment that I'm used to working in. So I think that if I can be a part of helping make Morro Bay more of what it should be and could be and wants to be through the efforts as a Planning Commissioner and also help bring some more up-to-date methodologies in terms of planning review and stuff into the, to the overall way in which the system works, I would think that over the next few years, I'd love to take that on as a task. And that and my continued community involvement on other things like wastewater treatment plants and stuff, so that's it.
Thanks, thanks Terry. Jesse?
Can we hear the question one more time?
So what's, what's your goal? What would be your goal as a Planning Commissioner and what do you want to accomplish?
A goal? I don't have specific goals. I don't want to revamp or redo the whole city. I mean, I think the, I think just being involved more than anything and bringing a youth to the, to the commission and bringing a new outlook and bringing different perspective. And I love it here, I don't want it to change. We could use some improvements in certain areas for sure. I mean, some, you know, there are certain business owners, property owners that have, could use some incentives to brighten up their neighborhood, brighten up their property, brighten up the businesses. As far as specific goals, I don't, I don't have anything specifically I would like to accomplish.
That's fine, yeah. Okay, perfect. How about you, Tony? What's your, what would be your goal as a Planning Commissioner and what do you want to accomplish?
I think my primary goal as a Planning Commissioner is to give back to my community through my professional experience and my abilities to get organized and streamline process and as Jesse said, kind of bring a fresher perspective into the city for the future of Morro Bay. I grew up in Dana Point, Laguna Beach area and between the early or mid 80s to still going on, late 90s when I left, I saw a lot of areas, a lot of beautiful natural environments that were just leveled and built on. And I think the reason I've always been attracted, I know the reason I've always been attracted to Morro Bay and consider it my home, is the natural environment that we have. I was on the beach last night with my dog, watching the sunset and I was just... I was on the beach last night with my dog, watching the sunset, and I was just looking around and I just couldn't believe I live here. And this is our best time of year. And so my primary goal is, I understand things need to grow. I understand there's a housing shortage. I understand that not just people who are wealthy, who can afford to live here, want to live here. And so I think my primary goal is to advocate for everyone, the community as a whole, and protect our natural resources and celebrate what Morro Bay is known for. I love it here and I live here because of what it is, not because of what I see it could be. And I think that's pretty common, a lot of places that I've been over my life where people move from different areas and they move in, because they might love it, but they look at it as an opportunity to change it and maybe change it into something similar to where they came from. And I personally just don't understand that.
Okay, great. Any other follow-up questions from council? I'm looking to my left. Any follow-up questions?
Sure.
Sure? Okay. Sure, absolutely, right? Yeah, sure.
How would you craft a vacation homes ordinance?
And I thought I got the hot tip. I got the dinger. Oh, wow. How would I craft a vacation home ordinance? Very carefully. Definitely, definitely, I wouldn't want them too close together. I would want them, 1,000 feet seems a number that's in my head for some reason, I don't know, it probably is very close to that already. I would want them separated. I would want them very tightly controlled. I would want some sort of a, an ordinance that includes a responsible party so that if there were complaints, PD has someone to contact immediately. You know, we put these vacation rentals right in the middle of our homes and I have one across the street, so I mean, I, it's okay, it's fine. They need to be somewhere. It's just they can get out of hand, you know, and when 150 people show up for a wedding. So definitely, definitely have limits on the number of people that can be at that residence for any reason, no events. Separate them as much as prudently possible. I mean, I know we're a small town here, so I'm trying to think what else I would want to throw in there. I mean, obviously, they would be subject to the TOT tax, right? I mean, so that seems like a no-brainer. Honestly, I would probably just look at something else a very similar-sized community has done and try to see what they did right, what they did wrong, and not reinvent the wheel and go from there.
Would you mind repeating the question and being a little more specific as to the ordinance and what that would entail? Would that be to restrict development of vacation homes? Would that be to regulate existing vacation homes?
Well, I guess that's part of my question.
Okay.
As part of our general plan update, I'm pretty sure we're going to write an ordinance regulating vacation rentals. So what would you want to see in that ordinance?
I think that that's probably two-part. I think that if it's an existing vacation home, is it registered with the city? Is the city aware of it? Or is it based on neighbors complaining that there's a vacation home in the neighborhood? So I think that's something to consider. And then I think if it's new construction that's specifically intended to be a vacation home or a second rental, at what point in the process is that established? Is that brought to the attention of the planning department through the planning phase so that then the ordinance that's in place can regulate that? I think that there are two parts to it and I think we'd have to start there before we could put an ordinance into place because there are different circumstances and situations.
Well, I'm going to answer your first question first and then your second question second. As I recall, your first question was, "How would I go about crafting a vacation rental ordinance?" Quite candidly, I wouldn't. I think that there is sufficient regulation on the books between the zoning ordinance, the general plan, and the building codes to effectively regulate the way in which people occupy their residences, whether it's the owner or whether it's a friend of the owner or somebody who's just vacationing there. I live with this right across the fence. And for two years, we had continuing issues with a next-door neighbor who lives in the San Joaquin Valley. And because of his work situation, he let his friends and coworkers and family come over and spend the weekends, sometimes six or seven people, sometimes 12 or 15 people, sometimes the occasional family reunion. We took it personally and we started by contacting the property owner, who we know and we like. And we said, "Look, you just can't do this. First of all, Morro Bay has a vacation rental ordinance and we would really encourage you to go down and check with the city, find out what the rules and regulations are if you're going to operate a vacation rental and then abide by them." My personal political direction doesn't really see the difference between a good neighbor who has a vacation rental permit and a good neighbor who doesn't, or conversely, a bad neighbor who has a vacation rental and doesn't abide by the ordinance. We eventually got code enforcement involved and code enforcement basically explained the building codes and the zoning ordinances in the absence of the vacation rental ordinance. And the owner understood that he could only have X number of people in the building and he's been a wonderful next-door neighbor ever since then. I think one of the biggest challenges that this community, as well as other communities, are looking at facing down the road with vacation rental ordinances is fundamentally, they're discriminatory. It creates a situation where you have a first-come, first-served limit on the number of vacation rental ordinances you're going to allow. And how do you ration those out? Do you have a lottery? Is it just literally first-come, first-served? What happens when a group of people who own their property and feel that they should have the same rights as their neighbors to have their friends and relatives stay in their house and pay them or not come? I think that, I think this is, it's a direction that coastal communities, more than other areas of the state, are having to confront. And the county started, it started in Cambria, some of the very desirable areas, and then Pismo Beach and then other areas. Answering your second question, if you're going to craft an ordinance, then I think that the crafting of that ordinance should look to your existing land use plan or your new land use plan, your new zoning ordinance. And as much as possible, rely on those two documents and then have a set of guidelines for people in the right zone with the right-sized property, telling them, "If you're going to rent your house out, this is what we expect, how we expect the people that come and stay in that house to behave. And if you're going to do it more than 10 times a year, five times a year, we expect you to get a permit from the city, which we will give you. There's no lottery, there's no limit. But you will have to pay fees and you'll have to be subjected to inspections of your property to verify that the health, safety, and welfare of the community will be protected and preserved by you doing this, that you have ample onsite parking, that you will not be affecting your neighbors. Maybe, and as much as I hate to say it, maybe you should have to have a use permit and/or a public hearing on that where your neighbors can come and tell either the planning commissioner or the city council how they feel about this type of use in their neighborhood." But I don't, I'm very reluctant to see the evolution of a vacation rental ordinance because I think it flies, unless you're going to set up a vacation rental land use and a vacation rental zoning, I think it flies in the face of equity for all of the people in the residential zones. So again, I guess my answer to both the first and the second question is the same. I wouldn't.
Any other follow-up questions? John?
Why not? Well, since we have a couple minutes here, let's delve even deeper into the fun subject of neighborhood compatibility. And tell me how that has defined Morro Bay well or has ill-defined Morro Bay and what would you do one way or the other? If it's ill-defined, how would you change it? And if it's well-defined, what would you do to accentuate it?
Neighborhood compatibility, could you please explain what that is?
You talking about design guidelines, John?
Yeah. The, currently, there are design guidelines for various neighborhoods and how compatibilities exist between various homes, sizing, facade, et cetera. And those have been crafted on an interim basis and then will be part of the final general local coastal, general plan, local coastal plan. But I'm, given the fact that I guess Morro Bay is somewhat eclectic in terms of its neighborhoods, how could an ordinance like that or a guideline like that, not an ordinance, but a guideline, further define or ill-define what's existed in Morro Bay in your opinion?
How could it further define what exists in Morro Bay? I think that local zoning establishes the building types in certain areas and neighborhoods. In fact, I think I live on Terry Street over by the storage units. And so I think that that neighborhood in particular, it seems to me that it's a little lax as far as, a little more lax as far as the development and how much attention is paid to that city. I noticed during public works improvements, I was kind of on the fringes and nothing was really touched over there. But I think to further define Morro Bay, again, I think that the neighborhoods that exist are pretty, are pretty good as they are. Maybe on Upper Kern, on Kern Street at the very top of the hill, there are a lot of large homes up there, so I don't really know.
That's why you look so familiar. We both live over on Alessandra Street. And on our side of the street, he lives in a residentially-zoned parcel on the opposite side of the street, we live in a mixed-use zone. One of the things that I would hope to see coming in terms of neighborhood compatibility down the planning and zoning review process would be the abandonment or further clarification of the mixed-use zone because it creates so many inherent conflicts and it is at the leading edge of the neighborhood incompatibility that you're really addressing. I'm not usually one for hard lines and hard edges. I think that things can be worked out as you go. But having a zone that in and of itself creates built-in conflicts, "Well, is this a residential or is this commercial?" Well, it's mixed-use. You can have residential or commercial, but if you're going to be this, you have to do that. If you're going to be that, you have to do this. I think that fundamentally creates neighborhood incompatibility. Land use planning steps in at the first wave of that. I think that you need to look carefully at your land use plan. I think you need to bring as much resolution in the land use planning designations and as the planning update is done to avoid systemic conflicts and systemic incompatibilities. The zoning ordinance dovetails in behind the general plan and is intended to bring specificity and clarification to the definitions of the various land uses called for by the general plan. I think that one of the things that I see that shocks me, I don't know why I'm shocked, I've been living here forever, I know Morro Bay forever, is that as a community that developed to probably 80% of its build-out under the county's authority before Morro Bay became a community, one of the legacies, one of the liabilities that this community inherited from that is in the area of public right-of-way. I've never seen so many solutions for the front streetscape in residential neighborhoods in my life as I've seen in Morro Bay. Every single residential property seems to have its own solution for what constitutes the curb gutter and sidewalk, which way people should park, how many people should park, where the driveways are, whether the whole front of the property should be one large driveway and people should park perpendicular to their property lines, basically half in their front setback and half in the street right-of-way. If I were going to, if I could wave a magic wand and do anything that would go towards bringing rationality and compatibility in some of the neighborhoods, I would find a way. And we're at a tipping point in my mind right now because there are so many existing residences that have been in the hands of people for 30, 40 years that those owners are dying off and their heirs are selling them off to people. And they're doing, within the perfect legitimacy of the building codes and everything else involved, massive upscale improvements and renovations of these properties, but they're avoiding having to resolve the streetscape issues and the right-of-way issues because Morro Bay does not have the leverage. And I recognize that there are legal limits as to what one can require, but I keep looking for a community that's found the legal mechanism to come in. And when you do X number of improvements or X amount of area, that you're then required to go ahead and do frontage improvements. Typically, these are entitlements that the communities only get in the process of upzoning or improvements or lot splits or land use changes. But there must be a way to come in and do some sort of an overlay. I know that there's the ancient subdivision rules that I can't remember, it's the 19-something or other rule that says when there's so many frontage properties that have been improved with curb gutter and sidewalk, the city can mandate that the balance of the properties in that block do that. Unfortunately, Morro Bay is so far behind being able to meet that standard, I'm afraid there's areas of town that are going to never see what I would call appropriate curb gutter and sidewalk or frontage improvements. And maybe it's just a personal fetish that I have because I'm a general engineering contractor and a general engineering contractor is like a hammer. Everything I see is a curb gutter and sidewalk. But I'd like to think I'm more sensitive than that. But I think it, working towards finding a better way to allow these massive upgrades when there's plenty of money being made, to do some basic curb gutter and sidewalk frontage improvements would help with neighborhood compatibility. It would certainly help with the parking impact situation.
Take your time.
Ah, it's the follow-up, I'm telling you. He's good.
I'm just old.
I see neighborhood compatibility as a different issue. We have a prime, prime opportunity here to take a look at the general plan and do, well, not whatever we want, but I mean, the city has the opportunity to make some significant changes to what we as a community feel is appropriate. Home occupation permits, I know there's a lot of businesses out of homes. That, I don't want to say generally seems incompatible, but it does seem problematic in certain instances. I would, I would probably want to see something in the general plan update that addresses home occupation permits and conditional use permits relative to each other. Facade improvement in the general plan update, you know, a 50% upgrade in interior remodel seems like a good number to me to say, "Well, if you messed with the inside 50%, let's mess with the outside, you know? Let's do some facade improvements, let's do some curb gutters, let's do some elevation improvements also." And they probably would be. And an architectural review committee would be a large step for a community of this size, but maybe that's, maybe that's a step the city would want to take, maybe not. Again, these are the questions that could be asked. These are the, the things the city could work through and see what works, what doesn't. But everything, everything's discussable, you know? Everybody can discuss anything.
All right. Any others? All right, well, shall we? I think we can go ahead, so.
So now the council will vote by written ballot and I'll collect.
So now the council will vote by written ballot and I'll collect those and read the results aloud.
Okay. Great. Happen, yeah. So as Dana is compiling all that, we've, you know, we've done this a couple of times and I've watched other councils do this and so as we've all said, thanks for applying. There's no right, wrong, or indifferent in the selection. Really, you know, we'd encourage, you know, however it works out for you to apply again in any other board that you might be interested in. Planning commission is pretty important, but we have other boards as well, so just wanted to say thanks. And Dana, you're up.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis voted for Terry Simons. Councilmember Makawetzky voted for Jesse Barone. Councilmember Heding voted for Jesse Barone. Councilmember McPherson voted for Jesse Barone. And Mayor Irons voted for Tony DeFazio. And Mr. Barone, you've been appointed to a current vacancy on, to fill a current vacancy on the planning commission for a term ending January 31st, 2021. Thank you.
January, January...
31st of 2021.
Okay. All right.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you. And with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn this portion of the meeting and we have about 25 minutes before we come back for a regular city council meeting. Thank you.